Thank you guys for tuning in to the Virtual Candidate Forums hosted by Teaching for the Culture. My name is Bianca Goolsbee and I'm the founder and I'm here to say thank you for being here, for being engaged and being intentional with who is going to be in our school board seats. Our children deserve the best and we want to make sure that you are operating and you're listening very closely to what these candidates have to say. Thank you guys so much for following us. Make sure that you take a look at our website, www.teachingfortheculture.com. In addition to that, follow us on social media at Teaching for the Culture. Just a couple of rules. I want you guys to relax, have fun, and also be intentional with what the candidates have to say. If you post your questions, we will screen it and if we have enough time, we will make sure that those questions are addressed as well. Thank you to the community that have submitted questions to us and we are excited to get started. Good evening everyone and welcome to the Hillsborough District 3 Virtual Candidate Forum. I am April Cobb, your moderator for this evening. A little bit about me, I'm a 22-year veteran teacher here in Hillsborough County Public Schools. I'm an advocate and have a strong passion for children and their overall betterment as it relates to them becoming great citizens in our greater of Tampa Bay. And let's go ahead and get started. Teaching for the Culture Candidate Forum follows the nonpartisan, unbiased, and impartial format. Time limits for all comments will be strictly enforced. In fairness to all candidates and the audience, we ask that these limits be respected. Each candidate will have two minutes, excuse me, for open remarks to introduce themselves. I will then ask questions submitted by each candidate, no, they'll ask questions submitted by the audience. So that we can address as many questions as possible in the time available, each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. If time permits, candidates will also have two minutes for a closing statement. In fairness to all candidates, we will rotate the order of how these questions are answered. We would get started with opening statements. You have two minutes and we're going to get started with Lynn Gray. Welcome.
Welcome, Ms. Cobb. Can you see me okay?
Yes, I can. Welcome, Ms. Gray.
Yeah, I have three computers and only this one. We've got together again. I'm so sorry. I'm Lynn Gray and I'm a school board member of Hillsborough County Public Schools, running for reelection. I've lived countywide and I have taught countywide, East Bay, Jefferson, Middleton, Latto, Claywell Elementary, which represents Northeast, South County, South Tampa, Northeast Tampa. And I say this because being a school board member for the county, it's very important that you know the demographics that you're dealing with. And as a teacher, for example, at East Bay, it helps a lot to understand the migrant population. And so I have been Teacher of the Year. I have taught every grade in college and I've taught for over 20, I guess about 28 years, 10 of them at Jesuit and the others at public schools. And at any rate, I have a lot of experience. I love what I'm doing. I'm heavy duty on instruction and I am very student centered. And I think that's a good synopsis there for right now till I figure out what I can do with this microphone. Thanks, Ms. Cobb.
Thank you for that response. Next, we're going to have Ms. Sally Harris.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. I am known around Hillsborough County as Ms. Sally. I own Circle C Ranch Academy, which is a preschool and summer camp near Middel Air Force Base. I have raised over 30 foster children and I have four children of my own, all who have attended Hillsborough County Public Schools as well as myself. I taught 18 years in the district at Monroe Middle School and Tampa Bay Tech. While serving as a board chair, I influenced a $1.2 million energy savings as I was part of the work that brought an increase in African Americans' graduation rate by 31% while closing the gap between Hispanic, Caucasian, and African American graduates. Graduation rates went from 73% to 86.2. Vocational certifications went from 2,569 to 7,042. We started with 22 failing schools and we saw it drop to five. As chairman in 2017-18, it was my decision to put the referendum tax on our board agenda in a timely manner which allowed enough time to be placed on the ballot. I am a change advocate. I am a change advocate and I am approachable. I'm a great listener and I stay connected to our schools by frequent visits and very active in our community by serving on many chambers and boards. Thanks again for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Let's move forward with Dr. Jeffrey Johnson, please.
I am the father of three sons in the district and I am running to ensure intentional equity, not only for my sons, but for the next generation through our school district. Our school board should reflect the immense diversity of our county. We need leadership that understands the plight of the inner-city community as well as academia in suburbia. For far too long, we have observed educational development from a year-to-year perspective and we must start rethinking about the next generation of scholars who are to come. Leadership is in my DNA. I've taught in the classroom, a third, fourth, and fifth grade teacher, Kelly Services sub, an adjunct instructor and college administrator. When I graduated from high school nearly 20 years ago, I was the youngest employee employed by Duval County Public Schools, serving as a feeder pattern academic coordinator for all while being an honor student and voted most likely to succeed. My passion for people didn't start when I decided to run for office. For years, I've been impacting the lives of students and their parents with our regional You Deserve to Be Loved Girls Summit that attracts hundreds of teenagers from Hillsborough County and the state of Florida. Thanks to member Shamburger and for her support and member Snidely, it is now a district-wide field trip in Hillsborough County. My passion didn't start when I decided to run for public office. For 19 years, I've been a pastor-serving community and the needs in supporting families weekly distributing food across our county. My passion for people did not start when I decided to run for office. For the last few years, I've had the amazing privilege to wake up every day and go to work for United Way Suncoast as the senior manager of neighborhood initiatives, providing resources to the community and providing academic support to transformation in academic schools. Because of my experience, Hillsborough County needs a candidate that understands the classroom as well as the community. Thank you, Ms. Cobb, and those who are listening and watching.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. And next, we're going to move on with Angela Schrodin. And please correct me if I'm saying your name incorrectly, Ms. Schrodin.
You got it. Dr. Schrodin. You got it, April.
Dr. Schrodin.
Yeah. So like most big life decisions that require much thought and reflection, my decision to run is personal. For four decades of my life, it's been connected to Hillsborough County Public Schools. So it's personal to me as a second-generation graduate of Hillsborough County who attended elementary, middle, and high school. Shout out to the King Lions. It's personal to me as a former teacher and a reading coach and assistant principal and a member of the elementary reading team that served the entire district and who chose to work in Hillsborough County for 15 years at every level. It's personal to me as the mother of two young boys enrolled in Hillsborough County who are just beginning their experience and have another 13 years attending our schools. It is exceptionally personal to me as the mother of an autistic child and a former special education teacher who recognizes how important it is to have supports and resources for all children and to recognize that every day I send my child into a system that was not designed for him to thrive. And it is personal to me as a current educator right this moment, who for over 20 years continues to work in classrooms and with districts across this nation to create excellent literacy programs for all students. So for all of those reasons, this decision to run is very personal. Because when you look closely at our schools, they work, they do not work for all children. And so we have to have school board members who understand that as they create policies and approve budgets and approve contracts, that each of those decisions will trickle down to educators and students in the classroom. We need board members with a solid understanding of curriculum and pedagogy in order to oversee a superintendent who says he's committed to both of those things. And we need board members who understand how to run a school and how many people are integral to that success so that we never lose sight that is the people of this district that ensure its success. So why am I running? It's all personal. I've dedicated four years or four decades of my life to this district and I am committed to seeing that they are successful.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schrodin. Before we start talking about specific issues and discussions about District 7, let's establish a foundation on the roles and responsibilities of a school board member. A reminder that you will have one minute to answer each question. We will start this rotation with Sally Harris. Were you able to get that, Ms. Harris? Mrs. Harris?
The question? No, I'm sorry. I did not.
Okay, we want to know, what do you believe is the role of a school board member?
Okay, that's very easy to answer. First of all, the role of the school board member is to hire and fire the superintendent and oversee that he is doing what is best for the district. It is also our job to set policy and procedures in place and make sure that they are followed the right and direct way that influence all the children in the district. Then we also must oversee and make sure that the balanced budget is taken care of and that it's transparent to the community so that they also have the ability to see that we're doing what's right in the right direction for our community.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Dr. Johnson, you're next.
In addition to what Ms. Harris said, I think one thing that was left out, the necessity of legislation, working with our current state legislators to make sure that we're lobbying for funding in Tallahassee. We cannot miss that moment, that opportunity. A person who is lobbying for funding in Tallahassee must be a collaborator, must be a convener, must understand statewide issues as well as the demographics of our district. We understand as we legislate funding and come back, as we do approve the budget, as we do set policy, we also need to understand how that is fair and equitable to distribute all of the funds that is necessary to our students in our school district. So we don't want to miss out that moment and point for the role of the board of a school board member. Their purpose of legislation is very vital to make sure that we're fighting and advocating for our children. As we look at our base dollars, as we look at our FTE dollars, we have to make sure that we're understanding what's happening in the state as well as what's happening in our local district.
Thank you very much. Dr. Schrodin, you're up next.
Yes, to all of those things, right? Hiring and firing a superintendent, overseeing the superintendent, overseeing a $3 billion budget and creating policies that work for the children in our district and legislating for increased funding to do all those things. But all of those responsibilities are predicated on listening to and meeting the needs of school district stakeholders. And to carry out those responsibilities successfully, a board member must establish and maintain relationships with educators, employees, school district staff, family, community through continuous contact, listening, communicating, and transparency, right? We also have to have an understanding of the superintendent's priorities because in order to effectively oversee a superintendent who stated primary mission is to increase student achievement and accelerate Hillsborough, a school board member must have a deep knowledge of pedagogy and curriculum to ask questions and push back and oversee every budgetary and financial decision because we have no money to waste when it comes to our kids.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schrodin. Mrs. Gray, you will finish this question up for us, please.
Yeah, the policymaking, we now have cycles. So we're very deliberate with policymaking. That's a big part of the job. And I'll just dive into that. Right now, I'm working on two policies. One on making sure that the black males are hired at a more frequent basis. And that's going to go, we have it through an attorney. We make policy language. We're going to have that in July upfront that we have to increase that. And my other policy that I'm working on is a strict anti-harassment for the LGBT population. Fiscally, Ms. Harris, you're incorrect about the referendum. In 2018, in March, I have mentioned the referendum in terms of getting that passed. And actually, Jim Porter, the attorney, actually wrote it up to put it on the ballot. Four times I did it and Marlene Sockhill has record of it. And four times, none of the board members agreed. Finally, the superintendent Atkins, the desperate situation, we were fiscally mandated that we did a referendum. And I put down 10 years, which I should have put down 15, but anyway.
Thank you very much. All right, so here we go. Our next question, and it's going to be started off with Dr. Johnson. What unique skills would you bring to the school board? Do you have a unique perspective that may be underrepresented, unrepresented, or absent on the board today?
Thank you, Ms. Cobb, for that question. What unique skills that I bring to the board? I bring to the board a plethora of experience from primary to post-secondary education. I think you need a person that really understands what the plight of an educator is in every aspect of education for our children. This is important to understand. A person that has an avid background can help the child and help our students understand where that next step may be in their life. That is very important. Also, my skills as being a convener, bringing communities together to make sure that we're always listening to our parents, our educators, as well as our students. So often, persons who have positions, those persons who have plaudits, they forget the very necessity and the skills that they should have to move the needle forward for our students. So you have to be one that is willing to collaborate, willing to be a convener, willing to sit down with persons and bring communities together. This is why this is important for me being on the school board because I've been in the action of the community. I've served in other capacities and I have relationships with other governmental positions and officials to bring them together to make sure that we're, thank you.
Okay, so I want to make sure that you all can hear the timer. I will extend an apology to Mrs. Lynn Gray. The timer is going a little low, but y'all gotta kind of listen for it. Can y'all hear that little sound? That's what you all should be listening for, okay? All right, our next person up is Dr. Schrodin.
What do I bring that's different? So I am the only candidate, I think, sitting here tonight that not only has institutional knowledge of Hillsborough County. I've worked here for 15 years, like I said before, at every single level. I understand what it's like to be in the classroom. I understand what it's like to support teachers in the classroom as a literacy coach. I understand what it means to open a brand-new school with not one thing inside of it. Because I was the first assistant principal out in Apollo Beach at Core Elementary. I also understand what it's like to work at a district level and have a macro level of all of the needs and how what we do in one part of the county is not the same that somebody needs in another part of the county. I also currently work as an adjunct professor at USF, where I am currently working with our next group of leaders that are going to become our assistant principals. I am the only candidate that has that and the breadth of knowledge from working all around these United States. And so I bring with that a fresh and a new vision because what is clear is that we need change because we are in a time of change.
That's your time, Dr. Schrodin. Thank you very much. Mrs. Gray, you're up next.
Yes, we are in a time of change. We did choose a new superintendent, which gives us a lot of opportunities to bring forward some exciting changes. I'm a special qualities, 58 years in Tampa, lived in all the communities, most of those communities. I've taught public schools over 26 years. Instruction, I was Teacher of the Year three times, two times nominated, once a finalist in the Hillsborough County, one in Pasco County. I also have a tremendous amount of momentum in terms of making those communities, joining those communities with curriculum matches. For instance, the African-American studies, we're now expanding that. Hispanic, the needs of the Hispanic community, I meet with them every month in Wyamama and in Ruskin. So I have a lot of instructional experience. And as far as conversion, I've worked under five superintendents, Mary O'Neilia and my past boss, we actually made the middle schools.
That's your time, Mrs. Gray. Mrs. Harris, you're up next.
Thank you. The unique skills that I feel like that I bring to the plate is, first of all, I am a very good listener. I am able to look at both sides of any situation and I have a proven track record that I can get the job done. I also am a mover for change. I like to see things change. And right now with the district and where we're headed, even this school year, we need to be able to have a board that can handle change and making the right decisions. My unique skills are that I have been involved in early childhood. Like I said, I taught at Monroe Middle School. I love the middle school age and high school. So I have a well-rounded view of what's best for the children academically, socially, mentally, and spiritually because they really need to get outside and be a part of our physical part of the activity. So I think I bring a lot to the plate and I think that as overall...
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. All right, so we're going to go over to our next question and it's going to be started off with Dr. Schrodin. This question comes from Teaching for the Culture. District 5 is a district that requires all hands on deck to assist with the systemic issues that the community and the students face. How do you plan to collaborate with the work needed in District 5? Can you commit to make this your priority as well?
So let me start by saying this. Anytime that an operating system, like a school or a curriculum consistently fails a specific set of people, there is not something wrong with the people. Because in this case, we're talking about children. There is something wrong with the system, the institution, or the curriculum. Every decision in District 5 has to begin with the belief of and in black excellence, to recognize, to learn, and to teach the long history of black excellence. All decisions have to be made through an anti-bias and anti-racist lens, hiring, pedagogy, and curriculum. There's an entire Florida statute, 1003.42, and a school board policy, 2260.03, written to address this very issue. So at the very least, specifically, we have to recognize and change inequitable policies, review all curriculum through a lens of equity, make students' histories and identities a central and integral part of the curriculum, and advocate for ongoing educator training on how to plan for equitable curriculum.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schrodin. Mrs. Gray, you're next.
Well, I've taught elementary, middle school, and high school. I've been a political science major, history teacher for almost 30 years. I've taught AP History for a number of years at Jesuit. I'm very appreciative of the curriculum in terms of how it directly relates to the students. I've been working along with about 30 community members of the African-American community and our staff members. And right now, we are going to be, with the superintendent's blessing and the chief of schools, Terry Connor, we are moving the needle. We are doing the infrastructure of curriculum revamping, redoing, and repurposing, making sure that we are looking at changing the textbooks, we're changing the educational resources so that the African-American learner appreciates who they are, their culture, and can become more competitive in terms of their actual academia while they're in school, which gives them a higher degree of self-esteem. So there's a lot going on.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gray. Mrs. Harris, you're up next.
Well, I believe, first of all, that when we have an academic program that is not moving the needle in any school, we need to act more quickly. What I did see a lot was that we didn't act quick enough many times. I feel like that we need to look at their concerns of the community. We need to look at equity. We need to look at the restorative discipline and how we actually handle the restorative discipline. We know that there are racial discrepancies. We know that we have poverty. And we know that we have to empower teachers in order to have them be able to move our students to a higher level. So as a school board member, I feel that's our highest priority is to empower those teachers with the support staff and team that they need to be able to support those districts that need the help.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to have Dr. Johnson to close this question out for us.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. First of all, I think we have to understand the difference between equity and equality. Equality deals with the factor that everyone is balanced on a social aspect, but equity deals with everyone having a fair balance when it comes to the resources that is needed. It is hard to address the needs of a community if you've never been a part of a community. So first of all, we have to understand the systemic problems that have been arising in the African-American community and black and brown communities for years. The systemic problems, we have to address those issues. Then we have to make sure that at our schools, that students see those who understand their background as well as understand their plight for education and the needs that they have. It is hard to understand the plights of a particular community if you've never spent intrinsic time with them. And so this has to make sure that educators understand that we have to make sure that also in the district that we're hiring black and brown teachers, that we're making it a place that is fair and equitable for them. And then we also have to make sure that we're listening to them when it comes to our turnaround students and what needs to happen in our communities. We're listening to those who are the experts and understand the children.
Thank you. And I will just want to give a quick plug in really quick. As it relates to always having been employed, from the betterment of this memory of mine, I've always worked in District 5. And I will say that collectively, it takes the entire board, district-wide seat, whatever board seat that is, you know, acquired by whomever that gets the role. It's important that we do not forget our black and brown children that have deemed not being able to receive equitable education here in our district. And the numbers are the facts. So it's very important to whomever wins the seat that, you know, you hold true to your word and do your part.
Moving on to the next question, it's going to start out with Mrs. Gray. What do you see as the district's greatest challenges? And how would you work to address them as a school board member?
Well, we have right in our face the COVID. And as I mentioned at the school board meeting on Tuesday, I'm not a big fan of the attending school like we used to. I really think that we're setting ourselves up for a closure as soon as we open, just like what happened at Mort, where there, just the preschool alone, there is already a case where a child has gotten the virus. So my idea would be to do the blended model, say two days in the school, three days online, or one of the other type of structures that would mirror a less inside the school with others. There is a great fear of fear in our community and it should be. A lot of our youth are getting sick and I want also the masks because even though we, if you're riding a school bus, it has to be a way of work.
That's your time, Mrs. Gray. Next up, we're going to have Mrs. Harris.
Thank you. I feel that we need to watch the district and see what is totally going on in our community. We need to be able to see if the numbers are going low, whether or not we should open the schools totally, or if we should be more sensitive to virtual learning. I know that the superintendent has made a comment that he's going to have a tighter virtual learning opportunity, but we also have to be very astute that we know that all the children have the same playing field. That's vital. We've got to make sure they have the proper computers, the accessibility if we're going to move into that direction. So I think as a board member, my job would be to make sure that we never forget the equality and the equity for any of the students that need our assistance.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Dr. Johnson?
I think as we approach this, we have to understand going into this new school year is a top priority. There was a lot of unfinished teaching and unfinished learning for our educators as well as for our students. There were a lot of things that were not accomplished. So as we go into the new school year, we have to understand the plans for COVID to make sure that our schools have exactly what they need, whether we're understanding Model A, B, or C that superintendent laid out, whether it is Florida Virtual School or Hillsborough Virtual School, knowing the difference. But not only that, we understand that the problems that our children had before this year remains the same. So we have to begin to calculate where were they when they left last year. There was a lot of testing that did not have an opportunity to be completed to really assess the needs of our children. So when we go in, we have to really figure out where are our children and where do they need to be for us to make educated guests to make sure that they have exactly what they need. So there was a lot of unfinished learning and unfinished teaching. So we have to make sure that our teachers have exactly what they need. We could talk about the plans for COVID, but we cannot forget our teachers.
That's your time. Thank you. And we're going to finish up this question with Dr. Schrodin.
April, would you, I just want to make sure I got the question correct. Do you mind repeating it for me?
No problem. What do you see as the district's greatest challenge? No, correction. What do you see as the district's greatest challenges? And how would you work to address them as a school board member?
Yeah, I think it's important that we keep everything that's happening together, right? That's a part of this whole change. Because while COVID is in our face, what is also... That's a part of this whole change, because while COVID is in our face, what is also still happening is the inequities that still allow us to have 42 of our schools on the lowest 300 performing list, and 38 of those on the persistently low performing list. We can't lose sight of that while dealing with COVID. And then I want to add a third piece, that we have a looming budget crisis that is getting ready to hit us. So we have to be fiscally sound and think creatively about what can we do differently with the money that we had? We just had $10 million spent on reading programs that aren't going to move kids. And so we really have to keep all of these things together in our heads as we continue to move forward. So while COVID is one of those things, and we need a granular look, and we need a committee that comes together with all voices on the table to solve that problem, we can't let that be the only thing that we're thinking about.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schröden. This next question is going to be kicked off with Mrs. Harris. It's well past time for the Florida education officials to reexamine and reinvigorate the 1994 Infusion Law to truly prioritize Black History and Ethic Studies for a new generation of students. If elected, what's your plan to ensure all students will receive Black History education as required by the law?
Well, that is a great question, and it's a great opportunity. As the district has moved into recognizing and influencing Black History Month, I think that it shouldn't be limited to just one month. Black history is Black history, and it should be implemented into our books, it should be implemented into our curriculum so that we get a true picture of the Black history and the influence that it's had on the learning of the children, the influence it's had on the families, and the influence it's had on our communities. So I am a strong advocate to make sure that we celebrate Black history in any way that we can move it into the next generation.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Next person, Dr. Johnson.
Ms. Cobb, it is so sad that this question is still grappling the minds of people, that we even have to discuss why Black history should be taught in our academic schools. Without a doubt, it should be taught. Our children, no matter what their ethnic background is, need to understand the advancements that Black Americans have made to America. They need to understand, if it wasn't for Black Americans, the traffic light would not be there, the pencil sharpener would not be there, the washer or the dryer, the dustpan or the broom, those aspects would not be there, the filament in the light bulb. There are so many advancements that African-Americans have made to this culture that it should be a part of our history books, because we understand that Black history is not categorized by the 28 days or 29 days, depending upon the leap year that may be in February. But Black history is 365. It is a part of the culture, it is a part of the DNA, it is a part of the fabric of who we are as a country, as a society. And I think this moves the needle when it comes to equity, that everyone's history is being taught.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Moving next on to Dr. Schröden.
So let's start this conversation, right, by saying Black history is American history, right? So in some ways, we could point to the answer as, why isn't it already being taught? Because American history is being taught. So looking at this specifically, because what's going to be necessary for this is that everybody doing the work themselves and learning about Black history themselves as teachers, as educators, as support staff, as administrators, because you can't do the work unless you know it yourself, right? So that's the first step. I think the second step is reimagining how we plan for instruction, because it's not enough just to know names and dates, right? What matters is an interdisciplinary learning where kids are reading, writing, thinking, and talking about content that is worthy of being learned, that recognizes and lifts up their identity, and talks about the contributions and where they're from, right? So in some ways, it's easy, but we just got to do it. We have to have people that make sure that it happens.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schröden. And closing out this question is Mrs. Gray.
So it is happening, and it does take a community, and it does take educators, and it does take a lot of the will of not only the superintendent, but it takes the will of the community, and we have that. There's actually a Florida statue, and Carolyn Collins, state level, made sure that Black history was taught. And then we did reach an exemplary, but that's only nine schools, and it was nine high schools. And still, I mean, as I traveled throughout all the classes I've taught, history was just, you know, a little bit of drop here, drop there. So it has to be infused thoroughly within the curriculum, and it has to be done with the leaders of our communities, respectively, and our staff. But our superintendent is on the path, he is working very hard to this end, and those achieved 3,000, and the Phonics that we bought, and $11 million, which I usually don't approve, Phonics has been data proven to improve literacy.
That's your time, Mrs. Gray, thank you. We're going to start this question off with Dr. Johnson. Florida Governor Ron DeSantis signed a bill on Wednesday allocating an additional $500 million for teacher salaries, bumping Florida up from 26 average teacher salary in the nation to be ranking number five. Based on your knowledge, how does this apply to our teachers in Hillsborough County?
Thank you, Ms. Cobb, for that question. I think that was a fair thing that our legislator did to make sure that the starting pay of our teachers is at $48,000. I think we have to go beyond that and even ask the question, what are we going to do about the current educators that we have and where they are in their pay scale, right? I think it's good for us to have a starting salary and understanding how to approach and how to attract others to our school district by that baseline being in Florida of what that salary may be. But we cannot forget the teachers who've been in the trenches. We cannot forget those who've been educating our children, who've been working without pay increases, who've been working without the cost of living being risen, or that amount of money being given to them in their checks. So we have to make sure that we're making sure that this is fair and equitable. Not only are we doing something to attract teachers and those who are starting, but we want to also make sure that we're rewarding those who are constantly working with our teachers, with our students every day. They deserve to be compensated, and I'm for them, and I think we need to move this message to the forefront as well.
Thank you for your time for that question. Our next person is going to be, excuse me all, Dr. Schröden.
So what was positive about it, right? It's going to attract possibly many teachers to Hillsborough County to fulfill the hundreds of vacancies that we have. So that is a positive thing. But exactly like Dr. Johnson was talking about, we have thousands of veteran educators that deserve to make a living wage that allows them to not worry about healthcare and emergencies and what's happening with COVID, and can I pay for my childcare? So one of the things that DeSantis talked about was that it was left up to the district in order to make some decisions. So it's going to be integral that our CTA and our union really come together to decide how are we going to also honor and give the teachers that have been working here for years and years and years the same due diligence that our new teachers and our teachers coming into the district were given.
Thank you for your response. Next up, we have Mrs. Gray.
So we know that teachers are the train that moves these schools and our children forward, and a drop in the bucket for the beginning teacher pay is what it is, a drop in the bucket time it gets divisible by all the teachers, well, first all the districts and then the teachers, is very, very little. And we all know, from what I'm hearing, each of you are educators, with the exception of Sally Harris, we know that effective teachers will, of course, be the ones that can move the needle for academic progress. I will say that I do work with the CTA. In fact, I was endorsed by the CTA recently, and working with them does make sure that the teachers have the correct working conditions, which is very important with the COVID. And also, we need to make sure their educational professional development is taken care of. So, you know, when we look at legislative, and we have a great legislative committee, we have to make sure that not just the pay, but all the other resources that make a great teacher.
That's your time, Mrs. Gray, thank you. Mrs. Harris?
Thank you. First of all, I think it was absolutely wonderful, because this is something that has needed to be done for many years. We need the community, we need nationwide people to understand that teachers are our heroes. They need to be paid and compensated fairly. So what we need to do in the district is find a way to make this pay an increase for our veteran teachers, for the teachers that have done the work, who have been in the trenches and who keep doing the work. We also need to meet the teachers' needs. We need to make sure they get the support they need. We need to make sure that they get health benefits at a cost they can afford. We need to also make sure that they get rewards and respect in the classroom from parents, from supervisors, and from the students themselves. So I think it is a balanced look at it, but I'm very happy to see it's the first step to actually bringing our teachers up to the salary that they need to get.
Thank you very much. And again, one of my little plugs, I am a veteran teacher, been doing this for 22 years, and I always add that I started as a substitute. It is very important that teachers that have been in the trenches for many, many years do not feel as though that they are devalued by this new incentive that our governor has basically put in place for the new teachers. But I do think that all the new teachers are deserving of entering at a salary as such. But again, we cannot forget about those that have been doing this and continue to do this, because being highly effective is not an easy task to do in the school setting that I serve. Next question is going to be started off with Dr. Schröden. How would you develop and maintain a relationship with the district to better understand teacher perspectives and what works best for students?
So as I think about what I do for a living, right, and what I've done for the past 20 years, the past 20 years that I've worked as an educator have primarily been spent as a coach and a support with schools and districts. And so what does that mean? That means that I go into districts and I work with educators and leadership teams to coach them through change in their systems and practices. It is literally my job to listen to people, to develop relationships very quickly, identify a way forward, and bring consensus towards positive change. I work every day to get people comfortable with being uncomfortable, because what comes with all change is discomfort. So my work requires that I push the thinking of everyone involved with the school or district to look closely at what is happening and decide, is this action or directive aligning with our beliefs, or is it in opposition to what we believe? And then to support them with a hard intellectual and the personal work required to keep moving forward.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schröden. And next up is Mrs. Gray.
Yeah, Cobb, can you repeat the question?
No problem. The question is, let me stop my timer here, sorry about that. How would you develop and maintain a relationship with the district to better understand the teachers' perspectives and what works best for students?
Well, I think the best way is to actually be in those classrooms. You know, I can tell you right now, most of my friends are teachers and principals, but if that were not the case, you know, I do classroom visits, and I think being a substitute last year in Sulfur Springs Elementary, you just learn a lot by being right in front of those students and having them on textbook committees, having them on task force, such as the African-American, the Hispanic task force. Having them involved with whatever is instructionally relevant is critical, because guess what? They're the ones that have to, you know, be in front of the kids day after day. And by the way, we know that some of this is a very tough carry for new teachers, and a lot of them don't realize that the kids usually don't change, it's the person who's in front of the kids that have to change many of their views and many of the way they look at the demographics. And that is a hard, that's a hard process.
Thank you very much. That's your time, Mrs. Gray. Next up, Mrs. Harris.
Yes, first of all, and first, I would go into the schools. I would visit, and I would go and talk to the teachers, go to the PTA meetings, talk to the PTA. I would visit with the teachers at their teacher meetings, and I would discuss with the students how they're doing. I would be visible for them to talk to. Being able to encourage change and support change for teachers means that you have to be able to support what the change is. You have to understand we need to move the district, and in order to do that, you have to be visible and know what is going on. I would ask for encouraged training, I would ask for visitation and support. We definitely need to support our teachers. So I think positive change is great, and I think that that's what this district has needed for quite a while.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Dr. Johnson, you will close out this question for us, please.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. I think two things should happen in this particular aspect. I think you should have listening to make sure that we're listening to that educator, for they're the ones that understand the best what they need for their students. And then we need to make sure that we're removing the lid. Sometimes educators can be stifled, they can be capped, and they are not able to explore the full possibilities of making sure that their children exceed to the possibility that they can, because they have been capped. So we need to remove that lid. And how we remove that lid is by providing the coaching that they need, making sure that they have every skill set that they need, they have every ability that they need, every training tool that they need. And then we have to start looking to see how can we give them what they need. Sometimes teachers don't necessarily come out and say what their needs are. And so a great administrator will understand how to pour into, that's what leadership development is, leadership, everything rises and falls on leadership. So those persons that are in our administrative positions, they have to understand how to listen to our educators to make sure that the appropriate coaching and training is given to them for them to succeed and to be successful.
That's your time, Dr. Johnson, thank you very much. Our next question is going to be kicked off with Mrs. Lynn Gray, and it says, share the work you've done or visits you made at, let me go back, share the work you've done or visits you've made to elementary, middle, and/or high schools in the community you plan to serve in the past year.
So just starting from last week, I was at Turkey Creek, and we established a way of work that she felt for middle schools, that is, would work with the COVID virus, and we discussed that at length, and that included technological conversations that were pretty detailed, and that she has about, oh, 20 hotspots, and that's a lot of different hotspots, and a lot of the migrants don't really have the technology to match when and if they do work. And another visit I had was Shields Middle School, they had infrastructure, I mean, the walls were mildewed, there's corridors that were just unacceptable, sidewalks were full of sand, and where I had a lot of that redone, resited, and corridors are now throughout the building, we kind of gave it a whole renovation in itself. Very important that learning environment is seen as being critical. High school, I go out to the new high school that is in Riverview, my son lives right near there, and that's really where I used to live, and Sumner is just a state-of-the-art high school, and I wanted to see the progress, because we are opening without auditorium seats, but that's important.
So that's your time, Mrs. Gray, thank you. Next up is Mrs. Harris.
Yes, in the last year, I've done quite a bit of visiting schools, and I've done some volunteering, substituting, and the main thing is that I helped to implement and have installed, supported financially, the water fountains that were bottled, that would fill the bottles up, and we serviced several of the schools in the South Tampa community for those. I also helped during teacher appreciation, putting bags together for teachers. I did a videos, supporting the teachers and thanking them for the job that they've done. I worked with the Chamber of Commerce to do goodie bags for the teachers when they go back to school in September. I have supported several schools during the COVID virus, because the teachers, they weren't in the brick-and-mortar classrooms, so that their morale, we needed to do things to increase their morale. So again, I did more videos, we did some gift certificates.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Dr. Johnson, you're next.
Thank you. It is interesting that I've been working on racial equity without having a position attached to the school district at all, just by being a volunteer. With our work of starting the You Deserve to Be Loved Girls Summit, we have taken a hybrid approach to making sure that all of our students are loved. This is something that we do every year. It is now recognized as a district-wide field trip in Hillsborough County. I did not have an elected position, I was not seeking office, I just made this decision a month ago. And so I've been on the ground doing this for the last five years, making sure that our students have exactly what they need. Each year, hundreds of students and parents come together for a day of motivation, encouragement, and excelling for them in their life. So I believe that when you're looking at what you do and what value that you add- So I believe that when you're looking at what you do and what value that you add, you're not doing that because you have a position. You're not doing that because you've been, you're running for something. You do this because you have a passion for people. So this has been a long process for me, that I love people and I love our children. And this is the reason why we do what we do every year.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Dr. Schrodin, you will close out this question for us, please.
Yes, ma'am. So as the working mother of two young children, who also travels for her career, I have made it my mission to look for opportunities to serve the children of this district within the sphere of my influence. So I obviously volunteer at my child's school as a volunteer in the media center and as a co-facilitator of literacy night. My church has an ongoing partnership with Dunbar Elementary, and it was my responsibility to train the volunteers on effective literacy practices and working with children and strategies. I work bi-weekly in my children's ministry at church, where the majority of our children attend our surrounding public schools. For the past three years, I've been the director of vacation Bible school, where 300 children from our community and our local schools attend for an entire week of learning. I assist and train parents of young children in our schools in effective literacy practices. I teach an amazing group of homeschool children each Thursday at Community Bible Study. And most recently, I served the students of this district, working as a facilitator to an ongoing...
Thank you very much, Dr. Schrodin. Yes. All right, our next question is going to be launched with Mrs. Harris. In one minute, please provide the community with the snapshot of your first 90 days plan, if you are elected.
Well, my first 90 days, I would hit the ground running. I would look at the strategic plan for the district. I would look at the data to see what schools are achieving, at what levels. I would take that data and digest it. Then I would start visiting the schools to see what changes have been made since we were in the brick-and-mortar buildings. I would check and see where we've moved curriculum, where we've moved the classrooms, how we've moved the learning environment with our technology. So I would be an advocate and start looking at all of that. Once those facts have been brought in, then I would sit down with our superintendent and ask him what his plans were, where he plans to move the district, how he plans to move the district, and talk to him about the ways that he's plans to make this move possible. I've been making sure that I pay attention to what's going on. I've been watching board meetings. I've been listening to his public announcements.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Dr. Johnson, you're up next.
In my first time with this, I would start with addressing the policy that's in our school district on racial equality that was passed by our board in 2017, and look at the action steps that are there to make sure that we're tightening the academic achievement gap. I think that must be a top priority for us, to understand those students who may not have exactly everything that they need to succeed. We need to make sure that that gap is tightened to make sure that they have everything that's there. Also, I will make sure that our technology is in place in lieu of what happened with COVID. If something was to happen of this magnitude again, are we prepared to make sure that our children have exactly what they need to have? I'm listening to teachers, and they're saying some of the teachers may not have exactly what they need to have in the classroom. They may not have as many computers. They may not have many technological advancements as other students and other schools may have. This is a problem. We need to make sure that that equity is across the board, that every school is prepared.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Dr. Schrodin?
Well, you know, one of the things that, because I've worked in this district for 15, 15-plus years, I have a really good understanding of the inner workings of how the district works. So I think I'd really like to focus on meeting with colleagues, the executive team, reviewing data, but primarily getting out to schools, specifically in our highest needs areas. Number one, we need to make sure everybody's safe. So let's start there, right? Because the pandemic will still be with us during that time. So we need to look at procedures and processes. Do they have the things that are in place in order to keep everyone safe? How are the teachers feeling? Do they feel safe about returning to school? How is that, you know, how is that working? I also think it's important, like I said earlier, that we don't lose sight in the middle of a pandemic. We don't lose sight of kids learning. So what is it that teachers need in order to make that happen? So that's how I would spend my first time as your board member.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Gray, you will close out this question for us, please.
Our first priority, graduation, and I'm recommending that we have it outside. I talked to the superintendent yesterday. We're looking at those options, and we have to make sure it's a safe option. As we know, the Fairgrounds only has one entry, and it's very subject to lack of social distance. The second, I would say I'm looking at the reentry as a very big priority. And again, I said and shared that the hybrid model, the blended model. Third, the idea of the transformation schools. We no longer have achievement schools, call that. We have 29 transformation schools. So I'm very concerned about the external operatives taking over some of our schools and taking them away from our public view. And also, I think we better pay attention to the mental health aspect of our students. They are aching. They're challenged. And through our trauma-based model, I'm having teachers being trained for children with trauma, and that means...
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gray. We're going to launch our next question with Dr. Johnson. Hillsborough County Public School leads the school-to-prison pipeline in the state of Florida. What policies and work as an elected official will you commit, you will be committed to do in order to combat this systemic issue?
This is a very sincere place for me. Looking at the stats that the state of Florida has given over the last couple of years, more than 48, 4,800 of our students have been arrested. Nearly 22 of those were between the ages of eight and 11. I think we have to address how we are approaching our children to understand the problems that they have. We have to understand the offense. Is it warranted for what the punishment may be? Many of our students come to school with the residue of what's happening in their personal lives. And so this goes back to the educators being able to have a willingness to have conversation and understand the students that they are, that they are teaching. And so when persons may not understand the rigor and the road that that child may be going through, they may pass this off. That prison-to-pipeline is absolutely outrageous. And for us to be a part of the leading forefront, we have to make those changes. But we have to understand the facts. We have to understand the stats. We have to understand what has happened. And we have to look at that. We have to look at preventative measures that comes to our vocational training, that comes to our apprenticeship, that comes to after-school extracurricular activities.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Dr. Schrodin, you're next.
So let me start with some facts, right? Because it's always good to start with facts. So during the 2019, 2020 academic year, the ethnic and racial makeup of Hillsborough County Public Schools was 37% Hispanic Latino, 32% white, 21% Black, 4.6 multiracial, 4.1 Asian, 0.2 Native American, and Pacific Islander. Yet despite these numbers, Black students are almost four times as likely to be suspended from our schools as white students, almost three times as likely to be removed from the classroom, and almost three times as likely to be expelled, right? How does Hillsborough County compare to other districts? According to the ACLU, in a letter that was sent to our school districts in 2019, we have the lowest student-to-school psychologist ratio. We had the highest number of students arrested, and we have the highest number of students cited by police. We have work to do. So what can we do? In a school district where there is no racial or ethnic group that is a majority and one that is increasingly diverse, one way that we can begin to solve the problem is culturally-relevant teaching that taps into the identity and the history of our...
Thank you very much, Dr. Schrodin. Mrs. Gray, you're up next.
So when I first got on the board in 2016, I began looking at the discipline, which is disproportionate for the African Americans. And I instituted the school-wide, with the achievement schools, the PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Incentive Support, which really turns the discipline upside down, looks at not what's bad from the student, but what are they doing good and rewarding them? And doing that completely from the teacher, from the principal, from the custodians, everyone in this together. And PBIS in some counties, such as Broward, has reduced the amount of referrals over 80%. And not only that school, but, I mean, that district, but there are many others. So this is a big initiative, started out with Doritah Edgcombe at Middleton, and I expanded it with the staff to cover 50 of the schools. That's a reality. That's what's happening. When we talk about keeping kids out of the prison and pipeline, we have to start restoring...
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gray. Mrs. Harris, you're going to close out this question for us, please.
Thank you. This is a very great question, because in the early childhood area, we started a program called COME, and that has taught all of the early childhood educators a different way to approach discipline. And it leads into the restorative discipline, which is one of the components that I really strongly believe. And basically, it just means to provide the students with a meaningful accountability for the behavior over the punishment, so that you don't punish, you just help them to hold themselves accountable. One of the areas that I think would help this is if a child is kept active in school, they're going to not have a problem learning. Find ways, bring some career education and vocational school technology back into the middle schools. Don't just have it in high school. So the kids learn a trade. When they're working on a car engine, they're not fighting.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. I will just put my plug in right here. School-to-prison pipeline is something that's very dear to my heart, and I have a personal reason for that. And I won't go into details here, but I will say that it is very important that we are intentional about changing the narrative as it relates to our children here in Hillsborough County Public Schools, with the emphasis on our Black and Brown children as it relates to our prison-to-pipeline issue. The next question is going to be launched by Dr. Schrodin. What would you want to see in the superintendent's budget to address equity and ensuring all children receive an equitable education?
Well, number one, let me start with something that's fairly easy, right? And so when we're talking about equity, we have to look at it through the lens of many different things. We have to look at through hiring, pedagogical practices, the policies that we have for behaviors, curriculum. So at the very least, I want to start with one that's easy. We need to have in every single classroom in this school district a representative library and representative curriculum that mirrors what the children that are in front of it. There's a great, there's some great scholarly work by Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop, and she talks about that all children need to have windows, mirrors, and doors. And they need to be able to see text that reflects who they are, so they understand that they are not alone in this world and that they are not othered. They need to have availability to text that is different cultures and different people than they are. So all of those things, I definitely want to see that. We also have to prioritize that we can put Band-Aids on a lot of things, and we could come up with a different system to discipline kids, but if everything is still viewed through a racist lens...
Thank you very much, Dr. Schrodin. Our next person, Mrs. Gray, you're next.
So the problem and the difficulty with addressing equity is resolved by a great education. That's the biggest equalizer, what you have in your brain. That makes everybody equal. So working on a solid foundation in literacy, such as our phonics program. And I know we invested a lot in education and instruction, but by golly, we know solid data shows that this will move those students up and help them greatly. Phonics, I'm a big believer in that. And as an elementary, former elementary teacher, I am very familiar with that. Achieved 3,000 also. Elevates a child's thinking. It's sort of like an AP where you can pull out abstract primary sources, so you can really get the child to think, not just textbook learning, but what the relevancy is of the real world and parallels of their own culture to what a famous role model did and all the other important...
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gray. Next up, Mrs. Harris.
Thank you. Our district has done a very good job at bringing in cultural speakers, cultural activity involving all of the different cultures, especially our Black students, our Black and Brown students. However, I really feel that it goes back to the curriculum. We need a balanced curriculum. We need our curriculum that looks at the entire history of Black and Brown children, of the culture. It needs to be year-round. I feel that when we do our hiring, we need to be really cognitive of the hiring process and make sure that we put in front of the students a person that is of the same mirror look that they can identify with. They need to see heroes. They need to see people to look up to, so that we can encourage them to want to improve their life and to become better community participants in our community. And I do feel that...
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Dr. Johnson, you will close out this question for me, please.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. I think one of the main things that we cannot miss in the question that you asked, you said budget. What would we like to see in the budget? Number one, we want to make sure that equitable practices are fair across the board. We want to make sure that what happens in South Tampa is the same opportunities that are able to happen in East Tampa or West Tampa, or what's able to happen in South County. So we want to make sure that that is fair and equitable. We want to make sure that our teachers, all right, our teachers that come in, they understand the plight of equity. As I stated before, there's a difference between equality and equity. And so as we're doing this, we understand that that equity doesn't start at kindergarten. We have to build consistent relationships outside of the district, meaning before they get to kindergarten. What programs are we working with to make sure that even in VPK, an early head start, that we're working with families and we're working with early learning centers when it comes to early childhood literacy? We cannot wait until they get into our hands, but we have to start a collaboration. We have to start convening and working with others that have the handprint of our children to teach them what...
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Our next question will be started off with Mrs. Gray. According to the latest FSA data, 73% of our third-grade students were not proficient in reading. We know reading is the foundation of a strong formative education. What is your vision for the reading instruction in District 1? How do you plan to accomplish it?
District 1. So we're going to go ahead and start out with the phonics. Not just in nine schools, we're going to move it into all of the, all the elementary schools of high needs. And that showed, the data suggested that those schools, it starts in pre-K as well. The VPK curriculum will be standardized, so as to not have so many different types of VPKs, which gives it equity. So one VPK is not better than, or not than the next VPK. And the phonics will be, as I said, carried out. When they have a good reading background in third grade, by third grade, if they don't, it's, the percentage of dropout rate goes way up. But the reading background has to be solid by the third grade, hopefully by the second grade. And that's what we're putting a lot of our monies and our attention to. The recruitment of teachers is going to be critical. And the certification has to be in that early learning, and that might be our biggest challenge, getting those effective teachers in the scope of work where we need them.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gray. Mrs. Harris?
Thank you. First of all, we have 358 early childhood, early childhood centers in the area. And a few years ago, the district reached out to those early childhood centers and started having them be involved in some of the curriculum activities, so that the early childhood centers could prepare the kids for the VPK program, so that they were educationally ready to be able to start the process. I think that we need to enhance that program. I think we need to reach them and be able to bring the students in to the VPK level, ready to start learning, ready to start reading, and being able to provide them with curriculum material that will actually help this to start. Bringing in phonics is great. Early childhood has created a phonics curriculum and used that for many years. So the fact that the district is starting to bring that back, that's wonderful, because phonics is where you begin to start your reading process. And then we need to read, read, read to our children. We need to...
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. I think once again, as I stated in my last question, there has to be an intentional relationship and collaboration with our early learning centers and VPK programs. It's good to hear the other person's now talk about that, but I shared that in our last question. That has to be intentionality, that we're not waiting until they come into our doors in kindergarten to make sure that they have what they need when it comes to early childhood education. We have to make sure that we're developing strong relationships when it comes to our early learning centers, as well as VPK head start. Also, that we need to make sure that the curriculum that they're working with and using in VPK, as well as early head start, mirrors what we're teaching. We want to make sure that the child is staying on track. They're not deviating. That we're speaking the same language, and this is important, that we start a conversation. For so long, we've had silos, and you know, this group is doing that, and that group is doing that. This person is against that person. This group is against that person. We have to have conversation about what is best for our children. And when it comes to that, we have to start at the early learning level, making sure that we're...
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Dr. Schrodin?
So I have 20 years of experience, specifically focused on... So I have twenty years of experience specifically focused on literacy, right? I currently work with children and educators and administrators in districts across the nation to improve their literacy practices of teachers and the literacy experiences of children, of students. So I can say with confidence that increasing literacy achievement depends most critically on having educators who are highly knowledgeable about the reading process in front of every student. Our kids need a knowledgeable teacher by design, not by chance. So that means that we have to focus on, fund, and support ongoing professional development for every educator. And those investments need to focus on the reading process in totality. It's a combination of print and phonics and meaning. The entire reason that we learn phonics is to gain meaning from a book. It cannot be strictly focused on phonics. It also needs to include speaking, listening, and writing about subjects and topics worthy of studying. They're all integral elements of an effective literacy curriculum. And it has to begin, like others said.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schröden. Thank you very much, Dr. Schröden. That was a powerful response from all of the candidates. Um, question thirteen, we're almost, you know, coming to our closure. Um, this is going to be kicked off with Mrs. Harris. What experience do you have to be a change agent for Hillsborough County Schools? Given the discussions in the United States post pandemic and the new normal, the likely economic impact of COVID. So we're having a little technical difficulty. So the question is, what experience do you have to be a change agent for Hillsborough County Schools? Given the discussions in the United States post pandemic and the new normal, racial equality, racism, and the likely economic impact of COVID? And we're going to start that question with Sally Harris.
For that clarity, I heard you loud and clear. Um, that's a loaded question. Uh, first of all, I, I am an owner of a business and uh, I have been um, opening the business, closing the business during COVID. I've been following the CDC rules. I've been uh, on every seminar and uh, Zoom I could be on to stay up to date on what's going on. I've been following the district. So what we need to do is stay up on the, the data. We've got to be able to read the data. We've got to understand. We've got to be prepared. We have to be able to be prepared to open the brick and mortar schools. We have to be prepared to go into uh, the virtual learning. And we have to be able to keep our students healthy and safe during this epidemic time. It's probably not going to go away. That's what everybody's saying. So we have to prepare ourselves for the different methods that we will have because we have an education to do. We have got to educate our children. No matter what the circumstances hand us, we've got to be prepared and ready to teach our children.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Can you all hear me well, Bianca? Thank you. Our next person up, Dr. Johnson?
Uh, Ms. Cobb, uh, thank you for that question. I think one of the main uh, portions, if we dissect that question, that we make sure that we zone in on what you asked about. You asked about economic impact as a, as a result of what happened with COVID-19. One thing we have to understand that COVID-19 released and removed a blanket of the classism that we have in America. And it also removed where there is a disparaging of resources amongst our children, amongst our, in our school district, right? And so we have to make sure as we're looking at this, those who do not have and those do have, we're making sure that in our school district, you use the word equity, that everyone has the right, everyone has fair playing ground, and everyone has the same resources in order to succeed. Because even though there may be a separation of economic divide based on the socioeconomic platform that persons may be in, that should not affect our children. All of our children should have the right, all of our children should have the same uh, uh, rights to the resources that they need in order to, to achieve. And so that's one thing that COVID did. So you asked that question about equity and racial and uh, the economic impact. And so that has to be addressed.
Thank you very much for that response. Our next person is Mrs. Gray. She will close out that question for us.
So uh, do you, do you want me to? April, April, do you want me to answer or did you want to go to Mrs. Gray?
You can go ahead, Dr. Schröden. And Bianca, stop it.
We've almost made it. We're almost there. Right? Lots of, lots of moving parts and windows, right? So I think the question, just to be clear, what experience do you have to be a change agent for Hillsborough County? Given um, all of the things, the new normal, right? So I'm going to go back and uh, bear with me for repeating myself. But I am literally a change agent for a living. That is what I do, right? So I, I don't get hired to go into districts and tell them, everything is awesome. And you should just keep working exactly as you're working. My very presence in schools tells everyone that we are in for some change. And so what I've been able to do over the last decade that I've done this work is really develop the ability to listen to people, to tap into the human side. I don't want to let, I don't want to lose sight of the humanity of what we do in schools, right? Change is hard and it's scary. And teachers and educators and employees, they deserve somebody working there alongside them to get through the challenges.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schroder. My apologies to you all. Um, once things get me a little roused out the woo-sah and bring it back. Now we have Mrs. Gray to close out this question for us.
Didn't take it personally. So you know, my experience uh, with working with Superintendent Mary Ellen Neely is that we changed the seventh grade centers all to middle school and all the processes and procedures were set up and that took about three years. So I, I definitely am very good at total changes uh, as far as experienced racial equity. We were definitely working on the African-American studies, as I mentioned. And that we began that in late February. Uh, lastly, additionally, uh, the economic impact. Uh, we are experiencing a ten to fifteen percent deficit. In my next project, after I helped with the referendum, I helped with the impact fees greatly. And now I'm going to work on restoring the total mileage rate. We did have in the nineteen eighty-five, a seven point one-two. And now we're, we're actually down six point one for total mileage. So we're going to try, the legislative committee, we're going to try to up this so we can have more money for our teachers, our maintenance, our capital uh, expenses and instructional materials.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gray. Our next question is going to be kicked off with Dr. Johnson. For the second consecutive year, the Hillsborough County School District has the largest number of schools on the state's list of persistently low performing schools. Describe the achievement gap in this district. What can you do as school board member to influence the change in this district?
Uh, good question. Uh, a couple of years ago, we were at fifty schools. And now we're at about twenty-eight to thirty schools, if, if I'm believing uh, so correctly. Uh, we understand now that everything rises and falls on leadership. So if we're trying to obtain and make sure that our lowest performing schools are becoming to that C status, we have to make sure that we're providing as many resources that they need. Uh, first of all, we have to make sure that we have teachers working uh, in that atmosphere that understand turnaround uh, environments. That is important to understand. Every teacher is not geared to work in those type of environments. Uh, every teacher has a different skill set. So we need educators who understand that turnaround environment as well as administrators to move that ship forward. Uh, once we get those things in place, then we can work on that. I know that it is the district's goal to have zero schools by twenty twenty-five. And that's the only way that we could do that. Looking at our lower performing schools, we need to make sure that we have teachers that understand the students that are lower performing to where they can teach on a level to where that they can understand it. And as we move that to them, they're able to give the best practices of what's needed in our lower performing schools.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Dr. Schröden?
So I, I'm, I'm going to get in the weeds a little bit with this question, right? So when you look at a district that's as large as ours, right? There is one, there's one thing that we all have in common, and that's high expectations. And that is children learning when they leave our school district. But here's the thing that I, I just want to make sure that everybody realizes out there, right? The need is different. So therefore, asking for uniformity at all of our schools is not going to be possible. The need is different. So what we do to support that is different. So here's what I was talking about in the weeds. If we have thirty kids sitting in a classroom who are striving readers, they need more time, right? And what we're trying to do as a district is to make everything uniform and that's not going to move kids. So in some aspects, we have to give some autonomy and trust our teachers to make some executive decisions in their own classroom, knowing that we're all working towards the same goal.
Thank you, Dr. Schröden. Mrs. Gray, you're next.
So when we had the interviews for the superintendent, we wanted to make sure we had one that was an agent of change because our, our scores, our literacy scores were so low and other things were just very, very dysfunctional. I uh, I will tell you, the, the superintendent and their staff are student centered and their very, very biggest priority is the high needs kids. And that's one of the reasons that he was hired uh, and his staff had come along with him. The curriculum must match the demographics, twenty percent of the African-Americans, thirty-eight percent Hispanic. Uh, we right now are looking at a abundant amount of translators. A lot of the Hispanics have not good communication at all from parent to teacher. Uh, and it is definitely telling. And lastly, the effective teachers, we do have to have those teachers trained and also the principals have to be very sensitized and, and engaged with the high need student and understand them thoroughly and we're continually.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gray. Mrs. Harris?
I will dive right in on that question. First of all, we have to make sure the leadership team, uh, is the right leadership team. We have to watch and make sure that they are moving the needle with our principals and the schools and getting the results that they want to see right off from the kick of, uh, first day of school. Then we also have to know that we've put and hired the right teachers at the right places. Being very, very cognitive of the fact of what that school culture is made up of and making sure that they have lifelike teachers in front of them for that culture. We also need to really look at allowing the teachers to empower teachers. We have to allow them the autonomy. We have to allow them that, to be able to move the students the way they are. They cannot be in a lockdown curriculum that on day two, at five o'clock, they have to be doing this one activity. They need to be able to have the curriculum. If they need to spend a little more time in that area, they need to have the ability to spend more time.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Our next question, our final question is going to be kicked off with Dr. Schröden. What is your vision for education for the community you hope to serve? And how do you expect to be held accountable for moving the district toward that vision?
So my vision for the, the community, because it's the entire district, is the same vision that I have for my own children, right? That my vision for my own children is that they are smarter by the time that they leave us. But it's not limited to that. My own vision for the education is that both of my boys see themselves as accepted and welcomed and part of a community where they are asked to contribute and they are honored for who they are and for the quirkiness that they bring and for the difference that they bring. So my vision for my own boys is the same vision that I have for all of the students. Our students spend the majority of their waking hours on our campuses. So in addition to them learning, I want them also to feel like this is a home and a community and they are in a place where they are valued for who they are in totality and as they are perfect, just as they are when they show up. We don't have kids that need to be fixed. We have kids that need to be supported in this district.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schröden. Mrs. Gray, you're next.
Oh, I, uh, my vision uh, has been with the Hillsborough Healthy Schools, the uh, the wellness, not only mentally, but physically, socially, and a positive school environment in every case, in every, every one of our schools. Uh, when we talk about our young children, we talk, we need to teach them a moral compass, the ethics. The idea of taking care of each other is very, very important, especially during the times that we're living in. Uh, also to, to share again, a curriculum, a teaching apparatus, teachers included, principals included, that match the demographics of our communities and our students that are in school. It has to be that way. We can't, we can't go in another direction. Otherwise, we, we will lose the battle of academic excellence if we're irrelevant. So I'm looking at also, as far as accountability, I'll tell you how you're accountable, whether you get elected or reelected again, uh, the voters, your voters.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Gray. Mrs. Harris?
Thank you. I feel that um, the vision for the education as I see it is that we take the child from birth to career. We have got to be able to educate the child. We've got to give the child the ability to drive them to success. We have to accept them where they are when they come to us. And then we have to be able to drive them to be able, to be successful. We need to give them a skill. They need a skill so that when they graduate from high school, they can get a job, have a career, and know how to get the job if they're not going to college. If they're going to college, then we need to help them get and accomplish the college application. We need to be able to have lifelong learners, teach them the joy of learning, teach them the joy of reading. And the way you help be held accountable as a board member is whether or not you're elected. The community are the ones who tell us whether or not we're doing a good job as a board member.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Dr. Johnson, you will close out the session for us.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. For me, uh, this, this comes from the place of being a father. Uh, we have to make sure that education for all of our children in the community uh, isn't biased and it is obtainable for all of our kids. Uh, all across our district, we need to make sure that our children have accessibility and they have the right amount of resources uh, that is available for them. Uh, we need to make sure that we're tapping into their potential as well as their possibility. Uh, one of the things that I really believe as being a father, that we're developing children and we're developing our young people, all of them, from the career to the career. We need to make sure that we follow them from the very beginning footsteps of their life and those early learning practices all the way through their career. Understanding that that career may not be college for everyone. It may not be military. But we're, you know, we're promoting entrepreneurial skills and finding out what vocations are for our children. That's what my vision for the community. And the community is involved in shaping and developing the minds of our children. That we're not just keeping it in the school district, but we're cooperating and we're incorporating, rather, our entire community to be a part of.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Wow. In respect of everyone's time, we're going to move into our closing statements. But we initially think that you will have two minutes, but we're going to go ahead and have one minute closing statement. And we're going to start with Mrs. Gray.
Okay, just a closing statement. Um, well, in general, I'm going to restate what um, the late Earl Leonard said uh, and believes in. It, it will be the teachers that will be the train that will keep our schools moving forward. The bottom line is taking great care of our teachers and also being student centered. Uh, I appreciate the, the love, not only of, in my world, I'm an athlete of movement, but the love of learning. And with that, we, we gain a lot of uh, we gain a lot of credence as to who we are as a district. We want to always say to ourselves, did we put the student first? Did we put the students' needs and, and their desires and their, their aspirations first and foremost? And that should be our guiding light. Um, yeah, and I, I don't know whether this is the proper time. I'm running for reelection, uh, District Seven, obviously. But uh, but at any rate, I, I, I really, really enjoy what I'm doing and I would love to continue.
Thank you for your time. Mrs. Gray? We're going to move forward. Mrs. Harris?
Well, we have a lot of work to do for the school, safety and mental health. That would include teaching our students coping skills. We need more career and technical opportunities for our children so that they leave graduation and able to enter into the workforce. We need to see an increase in the student achievement, which leads to no failing schools. This district still has work to do with racial disparity, racial injustice. That includes understanding the poverty that our students experience. Our policy and procedures need to continue to address these issues. I have always been an advocate for our students my entire career. Raising thirty-plus foster children opened my eyes to the struggles, poverty, home improvement and environment and lack of academic support in the home created for these students was one uh, of the hardest things to overcome. in the home created for these students was one of the hardest things to overcome. Hillsborough County has taken the goal of birth to career very serious. I am passionate about preparing our students for life and willing to do the work to get this done. I do not mind.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Dr. Johnson?
Because this is a part of teaching for the culture, let me pull words from the culture, from the Gap Band. The time has come for us to stop messing around. This is the time that we stop messing around. Our children and their parents, our teachers and administrators, they need us. This is not about the spotlight of pursuing political goals, but this is about the passion that we have for our students. Please understand that any intelligent person can learn the roles and responsibility of a school board member, but you cannot learn passion. Either you have it or you don't. You cannot turn it on. You cannot turn it off. Passion does not end when the school bell rings or it, you know, sounds off. Passion does not end when the galva goes down at the school board meeting. This is something that takes place in school as well as outside of school. So the time has come for us to stop messing around and we have to look forward to the future. We're investing in the legacy of our culture and our children, not just for today. It is beyond just this fiscal year, but it's also for the years to come. I, Angela, we have children in the school district right now. So this is passionate for us. We're trying to do this thing.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And Dr. Schröden, you're going to close out with the final response here.
Let me start by saying amen, Dr. Johnson. I also want to thank Bianca and Teaching for the Culture for this opportunity. And I recognize the intellectual and physical and emotional labor that goes into planning this event. So thank you. Thank you, April, for moderating and thank you for your 22 years of dedication. And I want to thank all the people that are watching and asking questions because our children deserve the best. And by watching and asking questions, you are holding each one of us accountable for rising to that challenge. We are in a new moment and it is a moment that requires change in how we operate. It is a moment that calls for boldness and creativity and an honest, hard look at what we need to do to create success for all children in Hillsborough County. And we need board members that have broad and deep experiences for such a time as this. And I believe that I'm that candidate. So I'm asking you to vote for me on August 18th. And on the ballot, I'll be the very one at the bottom, District Seven, all the way at the bottom. So thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schröden. Well, this has been our Hillsborough District Three Virtual Candidate Forum. And you have received all of the information that you could possibly need at this point in efforts to start beginning to make a collective decision that's going to be the best impact for your children. At the final part of this session, down in the comments, there is a poll. That poll is going to give you an opportunity to be able to express who you would vote for at this moment as it relates to hearing all of the actual comments from our candidates. We greatly, greatly appreciate you all spending this time with us and thank you for attending the Hillsborough District Three Candidate Forum by Teaching for the Culture. Have a good night.